On their behalf for other citizens, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who got up tonight and brought forward their input. And it's something that we want to continue, and hopefully you will feel the need to continue this program. Thank you.
The minutes from April 21st and May 5th, are there any corrections, changes? If not, do I have a motion? We have a motion and a second to approve the April 21st and May 5th minutes. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voted for the motion. Under the whole business, we have an action to rescind the vote to do the striping at Harry's Park for bike lanes.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to rescind that decision. Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Sure.
We've heard some people come and say we shouldn't strip the park, and some say we should. Brandon brought up the question, the discussion today, and in speaking with Mr. Alexander, I think he actually mentioned that his wife was bumped by a bicycle at one point. So I think there is some merit to what they're saying, and I'm not sure that the striping is going to be so unsightly in the park, and that there might be some merit to keeping these bike lanes in the park so that separate from bicycles from pedestrians.
I would also like to say that we have already had one accident where someone broke a collarbone there and someone steps in front of them. But the mayor made a good suggestion, I thought, in that we might even want to think about just having smaller bicycles in there and, you know, instead of having on those lanes, if we're going to do that, if we're going to have people walking and people riding, it might be more safe if we just have smaller bicycles up to a certain size. But one thing's for sure, I think we need to travel in opposite directions, walking towards the right and bicycling to the left, so that we aren't following along when someone steps out in front and then we have a problem.
Mr. Tanner, do you have something?
I just wanted to ask a comment on the fact that we've had, heard from both sides on this matter. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you really want to put the matter on the agenda, and I think that was due to the fact that we had a citizen, a deputy citizen, that Miss Goodwin was prone to be injured by the bikes. When this matter first came to our attention, that was a proposal that was made, and everyone looked at it and thought it was a very good idea. And one reason I was in favor was because my understanding that the striping that was going to be done was something that, if it was not beneficial, it was unsightly, that the lanes could be removed, and then we later learned that that is a possibility.
That is correct.
Okay, because I'm confused, because I think in talking with Mr. Ken Jimmy, is he here?
No.
He shared that the striping, if there is an alternative or a compromise that we can come to that will accommodate everyone down here versus having to put the strip those bicycle lanes down, I think we're all concerned about public safety. My thing is, if we can come to a compromise and come out with another decision versus striping or not striping, maybe a directional signage or put a time limit or hours that you can do your bikes, if you're going to be on adult bikes down there, to limit certain hours to that versus striping. I'm not sure myself at this time as to what direction we need to go with this. I am concerned that anyone may be injured by individuals or adults down there on these bicycles, but I also understand that public safety comes first, so if I am in order, I'd like to make another motion on top of the motion that has been made. And I don't think I can do that at this particular point in time.
Anyway, we have to deal with this first and foremost. You have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are strapped right now with our police officers doing the best job they can to cover what is considered emergencies within the city. So what I'm hearing is, we're proposing to have a couple of law officers, police officers, on bicycles, riding around in the park, making sure that we have a certain-sized wheel vehicle. And I don't think we can do that right now. I think what we need to, you were saying, reduce the size of the bicycle. I'm sorry, I'm talking to the mayor. It was said to reduce the size of the bicycle. Who's going to police that? Who's going to police if somebody's running one way and somebody's running another way? We don't have that. So we should take the action, what was just, most of the motion.
Okay, we have the motion and a second on the table. Any other comments, discussion? Not those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no?
No.
Okay, then we have, raise your hands, those in favor of the motion to rescind the striping. Those in favor of rescind?
To rescind?
That's a motion, right, rescinding the striping, which means it would come off.
Yes.
It would not be done, actually. Not come off, down there, I guess. Okay.
That it would not be done.
It would not be done. Right, so we have Ms. Rose, Mr. Goodwin, Tanner, and Mr. Fisher. Okay, those opposed. Okay. Motion carries. Mr. Rush voting against the motion.
I would like for us to continue working on this, if we can, maybe just have specific hours for biking.
This needs to be something, because ultimately, I could see where it may not be as big a problem at this particular instance, but it's a problem waiting to happen, I think, and it could very well increase the number of bikes, and it could increase fairly substantially. And you know, you've got 26-inch bikes out there, adults on them, and they're really moving quite fast.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion or suggestion that, Mr. Wood, if you could get with Mr. Ken Jimmy, and you all come up with a plan that you think might eliminate the issue and rectify the matter, and provide safety to our citizens who are walking down there, plus also accommodate our bikers, and bring that back to council at the work session. I think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Yes.
I would also like to answer Ms. Tanner's question about the striping pay. That is available, it can cost us $650, although I'm not for it at this particular time, but should we have any area that we need to do that, put it down, there is a pay that is available. It's a certain type of reaction pay, it's not something on the local market, but it is, but we can put it down anywhere and take it out at any time.
Thank you, I can bring your expertise there because I'm not a paying person.
Mayor and council compensation, I see, is this? Is that the next one? I think mayor and council compensation. I had that under the news, that's under the O. Do we need, do we have any comments on that, basically? Mr. Dyer?
I have one comment, and it refers to the comment that I made at the work session with Mr. Russ quoted, in that I suggested we have a committee to review the salaries because people had come and said we're low-paid, and I think we'll all agree that we are low-paid, but none of us are in here for the money. And what, after subsequent, you know, study or just thinking about it over the past two weeks, I'd like to withdraw that comment for one reason. I think the city of Canton is in dire financial straits. We lost $430,000 in property tax revenue for this year, we're probably going to lose $300,000 for next year. We owe, we're going to have to pay, probably borrow a million bucks from one fund to pay water, because we've got to raise the water rates. And all of this trouble was caused by mayor and council. Maybe not this administration, but mayor and council. I don't think any councilperson, either present or future, should benefit or get a higher pay until the city's in good financial shape.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but here is, the reason that was on there, as you know, really had nothing to do with increasing compensation. It had to do with correcting a situation that exists where we cannot find in the records how mayor and council are supposed to be paid. I mean, and we find it back to 1993, when it was $35 a meeting for council, $250 a month for the mayor, with the council having a maximum of, what was it, three? Two meetings a month. But since that time, the council, instead of maximum $70 a month, which would be $840 a year, but for years, the council's been paid $2,100 a year, with no stipulation or keeping up with numbers of meetings or anything like that. The reason that this was put on here, basically, as I said, was not for any kind of change or a new compensation or anything like that, but was to clear up and put in context in what actually we are doing and have been doing for a number of years, what is historically happened. Now, I think Mr. Russ may have made an interesting point, and I defer to the city attorney in that, he said that, you know, this could potentially be construed as giving a raise if we don't have the records to show that the money was already there, that $2,100 is what you're supposed to be paid, and yet we go from the records showing $840 a month, would that be considered a raise?
Eight forty a year.
Eight forty a year, I'm sorry. Eight forty a year. I almost got you one anyway. No, could that?
You asked me?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
The difficulty we have is that the charter provides compensation to be set by an ordinance. When you look in the ordinance, under pay, it says council's supposed to adopt an ordinance. There is no ordinance setting your pay. The 1993 is just a motion and a vote. It was not put into the code of ordinances, so I don't think you can vote and say, well, retroactively, we passed an ordinance 10 years ago or nine years ago. I don't think you can do that. So I think you would be, you could say what it is, but it wouldn't take effect until January. Because the law, the state law is you cannot raise pay during, until after the next term starts, which is January. So I don't think there's any way to just sort of say, oops, we didn't do an ordinance we meant to, here it is. I don't think you can do that.
Okay, well, I tend to agree with Mr. Russ, then, that maybe we should just kind of put this on hold until later in the year.
You can't get into qualifying. If you're going to do it to take effect in January, you'd have to do it before August 1st, when the qualifying starts, because you cannot change your pay during qualifying.
So if, at the end of the year, how much should Mr. Wood write a check to the council members for?
Well, it's supposed to be monthly. It's supposed to be based on two minutes, just like the mayor's pay is supposed to be monthly. That's what the ordinance says. Somewhere along the line, it was made the decision for convenience to do it annually, but annually it would be $840. But it's also, under the 1993 ordinance, it's based on attendance, two meetings per month if you attended them, with a maximum, it's $35 a meeting, a maximum of two meetings, but it's as attendance, so it would depend on what, how many meetings actually attended. You're not even operating anywhere close to the 93 vote. I mean, it's just gotten so far beyond that. Apparently, it was discussed at a council meeting, but there are no minutes and certainly no ordinance.
So what, how would you suggest that this be rectified?
An ordinance needs to be adopted, it needs to be put into the code of ordinances, where we'll all know from now on what the pay is. Now, if that's above the 93, it can't take effect until January. If we're going to pay based on only known information we have, it's $840 maximum.
Mr. Mayor? How long, I don't know the answer to this question, how long has the council been and the mayor been paid at the current rates, for how many years?
Ten years or more.
For ten years or more.
That's my understanding. My money's on that here, sir.
Do we go back to the prior prior council members and get the money back? You know, I mean, or does that just set a precedent, and we follow that precedent, change it, and then adopt to want the new ordinance in January?
You can take whatever action you want. The question was asked to me is, what do we need to do? You have to have an ordinance.
So let me, for any clarification, whatever, do we then need to direct you to do an ordinance prior to January 1st for the mayor and council to act on that speaks to the current situation?
Yes.
That's what you're saying, we need to do prior to August 1st, which is the month that council members, some council members will be qualified. But that action, would that action then take place this year, or it would not take place until January of 2012, and that means that you would get the $2,100 that you've been getting all along? And at the end of this year, you would get not the $2,100, but the $840? I just want to know, what are we talking about? I'm thoroughly?
No, actually, I think you got it. What you, you need an ordinance to do something, whether it's raise your pay, do what you've been doing, keep it the way it is. There is no ordinance, so there has to be an ordinance.
So if we do an ordinance to keep things as they currently are, the $2,100 that council is receiving, and the, I think it was $35 a meeting, or no more than six meetings, the $2,100 a year, and $3,000 for the mayor, if we do that prior to the August 1st meeting, does that mean that council will continue to receive the same compensation that they are currently receiving?
Not for 2011.
Not for 2011. So 2011, we have to go by the two meetings per month, meaning 800, whatever that comes out to be, another method, $840, and then at the end of 2012, you would get the $2,100.
Correct.
Okay, well, whatever, the matter needs to be rectified. So I would make a motion to direct, and I think you're saying that that would be looked at, then, that the council would be illegally giving themselves a raise if they say you're going to afford it right now and they get that at the end of 2011, which is something we can't do.
There would be no ordinance to support that.
There'd be no ordinance to support that. Okay, I'm trying to think of what kind of motion I'm hoping to make here.
I know what I would, I think that we need to instruct the city attorney to go ahead and prepare an ordinance, keeping things just as they are today.
I can concur with that, but...
I'll prepare that for consideration next month. Take action or not?
Okay.
Yes, it's okay for me to do that, but I'm looking at 2011, too, because I think there's something that council members, well, as everybody knows, I'm the one that put that monkey wrench out there and it was taken to the cleaners, of course, these pay raises or compensations, which I thought I'd never do again, but I always thought that council members needs to be treated better. I, how can, or what can we do, or can we do anything to keep the compensation for 2011 the same as it is right now?
There might be an argument that you could make that says, because that's what we thought it was when we ran into office, but the charter says it's set by ordinance, and the ordinance hasn't been set.
Well, I'll tell you what, I didn't know what it was when I ran for office. I was running for office to be a public servant.
I don't really think there's anything you can do.
What if you, what if you had a, an increase to, not an increase, but a, an ordinance that established the pay as it is, is there any exception to that that could be made from one year to next year, so that for the first year, they would make not just the $2,100, but the difference between $840 and $2,100?
Yes.
Could that be done in the ordinance, so that after January 1, then you would make it up, but every year after that, you'd be back to the $2,100?
Yes, and the way that would make sense to do that would be to say, in 2012, you'd be paid twice, one time you'd be paid $1,200 and whatever the number works out to be in January, and then in December, you'd be paid $2,100, and from there after, you'd be paid $2,100.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Russ has volunteered to step forward as a Citizens Committee for a Better Canton Government. I think, why don't we just let his committee go to work, see what they come up with, because no matter what we decide tonight, or next week, or next month, nothing changes. And bring that forward versus trying to wheel in with, how can we backlog in, bring it forward, or whatever, and let's have that looked at, and then make a decision based off of that.
Well, we would need, for this to occur, we would need to do something prior to two meetings before August 1st.
You'd have to do it July or in November or December.
He made a motion, and I guess you need to act on it. I have another motion, I want to make one.
Did you make a motion?
No.
Okay, enough.
Okay, I did not?
Make a motion. Tanner, you got a motion?
No, we have to finish, we have to say, but then I will make a motion.
Finish. Yes, please say it.
My motion is that we direct Mr. Dyer to do an ordinance that would reflect the current, that would correct the current ordinance that's in place, and that council members would get the $840 this year, but next year, those council members who may be here again or not be here would be affected by the new ordinance amount to bring it up to retroactive pay and then the current pay, whatever, he don't have to worry.
Retroactive would only apply to those re-elected council members.
I understand that. I understand that.
So, Ms. Tanner, make a motion. We have a second. Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, you understand? Okay. Let me, let me kind of, what the motion essentially is, is that the compensation will be established as exactly what we're doing now, what we have historically done in the city, with the exception that since this year, the council theoretically would have to be paid $840, there will be a provision in that during that first year, maybe January or whatever, the difference between $840 and $2,100 would be paid to each council member, right after the first of the year, and then at the end of the year, once again, they'd be back on target for the $2,100. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except that I'm going to ask, if those council members were not here? Any current council member that was not re-elected or did not run, and therefore wasn't here in January, wouldn't get the $1,260, or $21.
The other question would be, is if we're going to be paid according to the old ordinance, then it's meetings that are attended.
On the certification report.
That's right. So we have to subtract the unattended meetings from the unemployment, but that doesn't count the other meetings that we go to the council. That being on the water and sewer, the meetings on everything else, that doesn't count, so can we get expenses for that, then?
No, the 93 action said a work session and a regular council member. Council members get $35 for a work session, $35 for a regular council member, not just me.
Well, I'm not here next year, y'all just take that $1,260 as a donation fund, all to the city.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any other questions or thoughts?
One more. Big news, new shoes.
Motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? All members voted for the motion. The next item is the Rattellis Report regarding our, the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority proposal, which you have in your agenda package, what it is here, is under attachment C. And, you know, I hope all of you have looked at these numbers, and hopefully you have understood exactly what they say. I'm not sure I have totally, and that's one of the reasons I had asked someone, the representative from Rattellis, to be with us here tonight and answer some questions. When you, when you look at the three scenarios that they have analyzed, the first one was as though the Water and Sewer Proposal, and most of you know the proposal is that the Water and Sewer Authority would take over the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, and that the Water and Sewer, I mean, that Cobb and Ida would take over the debt, take the debt on the reservoir, and they would take 5.25 million gallons per day capacity out of our 11.25 million gallons per day. The additional 6 million gallons per day would be held by the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority in escrow, so to speak, for city purposes. Now, if you look at that scenario one, scenario two says that the city keeps its, keeps the plants, keeps the revenue, reservoir, and the rates applied there would be the rates that Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority has. If we were to raise our rates to those, that amount, then, and we keep the various plants and the reservoir, how would, how would this work out financially? The third scenario was that we transfer the, all the plants to the Water and Sewer Authority, the reservoir goes to Cobb, and we increase the water rates to what Cobb, I mean, what Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority rates are, and analyze that to see what the needs would be and how that might work out. But now, it appears to me that basically what it says here is that any scenario there would require a rate increase. However, looking at fiscal year 2011, scenario three, once again, that's where we transfer everything to the Water and Sewer Authority, all the plants, we, the reservoir goes to Cobb and Ida with 6 million being held, and we are, the city, according to the proposal, will maintain the distribution and collection system, so we would still be doing the billing under any Water and Sewer Authority proposal. We should be doing the billing and the collections, we'd be buying water and sewer treatment services from the authority wholesale and reselling. Now, hopefully, most of you have taken a look at these numbers. Under scenario three, it appears to me that we have one item, the 950,000 of additional gas needs, and that, according to the footnote, says it's $150,000 for water system inventory study and a water sewer rate study, 500 for capital projects, 350 for additional capital projects that will be done. That number is somewhat flexible in that we don't know what future years are going to bring. This assessment is based on one year old, and it concerns me a little bit that we are trying to project the future water and sewer system of this city out into the future years based on one year of data, just 2011. Now, if, for instance, we know we're not going to do another rate study this year, we know we're not going to do another water system inventory this year, so some of that money is going, really, is not going to be there next year, some of that cost won't be there next year. If we could just, if you were to remove that 950,000, instead of the projected need for a 35.4% increase, then it would be a 17.3% increase required. Now, the proposal here tonight, as I understand it, we're going to be talking about later on, is basically a 30% increase. on, is basically a 30% increase. So, if we could look at Scenario 3, it's my opinion that with a slight leap of faith, I think Scenario 3 might well work for this city. I'm really concerned that if we miss this opportunity with the Water and Sewer Authority, I think year two, three, four, five years down the road, we may well regret that. Yes, okay. I think that there are so many uncertainties out there, a different cost. We don't know what the maintenance and operational cost of the reservoir is going to be for us. We don't really know what that is. We don't know for absolute certain that we've seen, or we are able to project all of the costs that's going to be on that reservoir. In this scenario, that goes away. All of our costs go to the reservoir. And yet, we maintain 6 million gallons worth of capacity in that reservoir. Now, if we look at, the latest number I had was that our cost, including debt service and other costs of the reservoir is about $27 million for 11.25 million gallons. That equates to about $2.4 million for each million gallon capacity that we got in the reservoir. If we get our 6 million, if Cobb County pays us 24 million, which is about what our debt is on it, and 3 million, of course, is what we paid into it, but if they just pay us 24 million, we're going to end up getting 6 million capacity for 3 million dollars. A half a million dollars per million gallons of capacity in that reservoir, when it's costing us right now, 2.4 million gallons, $2.4 million per million gallons. So, there's a lot involved here, and we don't know what the future holds for our system. There's no doubt about that, and, you know, we know there's work we have to do on our distribution and collection system. That's going to be with us no matter what we do. We're going to have to do that anyway. But I just think that we need to really strongly consider this option, and really take steps to move forward, even with a rate increase that we're going to have to implement on the immediate, immediately. But I think that it's an opportunity that we have, and I think that there's still some negotiating room on some of the sewer rates that they have quoted as wholesale. I don't think there's any negotiating room on the two and a quarter for the water rates. But I think we need to determine exactly what we have to have in sewer rate purchasing from Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority in order to make this thing work. But I think it needs, Mr. Russ?
Yes, sir. One of the things, I have a slightly different opinion than you have just stated. The last paragraph of the letter from Raptellus says, "The results of the analysis indicate that transferring operation maintenance of the treatment plants to CCWSA and transferring the capacity in the reservoir to Cobb County would not have provided an economic benefit to the city, nor would these scenarios have eliminated the potential for defaulting on outstanding loans in the short term without implementing additional rate increases." That said, their impression is that the three scenarios aren't going to work, but there's another scenario that I think you sort of alluded to when you were, in your discussion, that we haven't evaluated, and that would be surrendering the reservoir to Cobb County for the amount of money that we owe, and keeping the water and sewer distribution facilities on our own. And I think I would like to ask Mr. Wornath if that's feasible, and if perhaps they could look at it for us, and give us an option, as option for all these other three.
I got to say, that I would vote to rid of that reservoir as strongly as I possibly could, because we've been through too much with that reservoir. I mean, I, we need to keep a portion of it. We need to keep a portion of it.
I didn't mean, I meant getting rid of it in the same vein as we would with Cherokee County. They would keep a reserve for us for the 3 million that we got invested.
As long as, maybe they wouldn't want us to have any operational cost of that, when that pump cranks up over there, hopefully, they wouldn't want us to do that.
The last paragraph that Mr. Russ referred to, to me, is wrong, is because it dealt with 2011. It didn't look forward to if we took different steps as far as Scenario 3. And in the Scenario 3, doing away with 950,000, and bringing those numbers down to that 17% increase, all said, we could have something that we might need, but I don't believe we're looking at the 950 again. But the one other thing is that when they refer to utility partners, that being 1.177 million, I thought a week or so ago, when we talked about, Mr. Price said it would be in the neighborhood of $600,000, $700,000. So, I think that number is off base. Based on that, then, and I feel there are other numbers that are off. Bottom line, recommendation that I would want to say is, Scenario 3, we sell back, if you call it sale, or have Cobb County take ownership of the reservoir, with the caveat of us maintaining that 6 million gallons per day withdrawal, near to drought. We go to Cherokee County and say, we have a option for 600, I mean, 6 million gallons of water per day. They would be interested in having that piece. And also, we have the 4 million gallons per day fee that they would like to see for the sanitation sewage system. So, we do have bargaining chips by both companies to be able to get ourselves the best deal, and get out of the reservoir business, the water plant business, and the sewage treatment plant business, maintain our distribution lines, and maintain our bookkeeping for the city. And we want any citizen go without water. They will have water, they'll have sewage, and they will be treated much fairer, more fairly, I should say, I'm sorry, versus looking at the next three or four years, I've got a 65% water increase if we stay as we.
Mr. Tanner, do you have a comment? Mr. Tanner?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I looked at this stuff, and it's kind of like the Greek, and the fact that we only got this on Monday, and all of, everybody has their report on this, I have a concern about getting rid of our utilities to anybody. I don't think anybody could treat, or would treat our citizens any fairer than we, the city. But I am proposing, or what I would like to suggest, or even make a motion, is that because of the short time that we have to digest this, the comments that have been made from our colleagues here, is that we take this until the work session, where we can get into it, a little bit more depth, and look at your figures, and what you recommend and suggest with, because quite frankly, I'm not really thrilled about any other scenarios, and I'm wanting to see if we might ever come up with something.
I didn't, I didn't write this up necessarily for anything, they voted anything, anyway, and I do expect that it'll roll over to the work session.
All right, as long as we're not planning on taking any action on this tonight.
No, I don't think I was going to be acting on this. Was I?
Well, once again, the council comes to try to make hard decisions, and not prepare. We've had, as based off of Mr. Bryant's 45-minute presentation a couple of weeks ago, on the needs for us to do something, we've been looking at this, we're keep going. We are going to miss a golden opportunity to offload the reservoir, and get a good deal from Cherokee County to operate our water sewage system, and we will maintain control. That's our job. We're giving anything up, and that's what we're going to fight for. But to sit around here and run that thing up another month, another two months, we're going to look at another increase in our rates, and I am against that. So, if we can agenda, make the work session, where we can make a decision and put that into the agenda, we've got to. We've got to have a direction for Mr. Wood to go and get the best offer from Cobb, and then also get the best offer from Cherokee, then we can make a good decision. But right now, we're just running around in a circle, and we've got to stop it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think anybody is delaying or putting aside their responsibility as a council member. All of this information that we have regarding this matter right here, only got to me on Monday. Now, we did have a water study, rate study that was done, that we are going to have to take action on. But all of this information has just come to us question, and I think the fact that I, as a council member, want to be thoroughly informed about what this presented of this information here, has nothing to do with me negating my responsibilities as a council member. That's the reason I made my motion, and I stand by that motion, not to the, not the fact that I'm trying to delay anything, or us taking action. We are still going to have to act on this. You said it was not going to be acted on tonight, anyway. So, I resent that comment that we, as a council, can't go delaying and pushing things aside again, because nobody is more concerned about taking action and saving this city money than all seven of us.
Mr. Mayor, I asked earlier about a fourth option, and Mr. Wornath is here, and perhaps he has an opinion on that. We could even ask him to have a study.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, but I'm not, I'm not.
Okay. Very small. I did not personally attack anybody. I lumped this all together as due diligence, but I've got April 12th document. We've gone back over the past three, four months, I've got a packet here that I've been studying, and hopefully, everybody else has, that is trying to give us good feedback. Problem is, we still need more adequate information, and when we looked at these numbers that we received on Monday, there are questions. So, if you'd like to have the gentleman step up.
Yeah, would you come on up a little? I think Mr. Russ's scenario was just sell the reservoir, and how that would affect, just by, I'm assuming just by removing the debt service required on the reservoir.
And keeping, if we can make an agreement with Cobb County to keep the 6 million gallons, or whatever it was, as reserved for camp in time to drought, that would be the proviso.
Where to start? There's been a lot of comments tonight that I think need some clarification. On that particular proposal, I think it certainly should be considered, basically, running your system the way you've always done it, but look at the option to transfer the capacity back to Cobb County with them absorbing your debt, which is a significant cost impacting on your system. But also, with the proviso, that some reserve of that capacity would be available to you in the future. I think one of the things that I find interesting, you talk about 6 million gallons available to you, I think they're talking about having that capacity available to you, but when it's time to, for you to take it, it would not be given to you, it would be sold, and wherever it costs them to produce it, and get that water to you. So, it wouldn't be free.
Excuse me. That's raw water. They got to go through our pump station, and who controls the pump station?
Well, that's, if that's the case, then that's fine, but...
That will be the case, and that's where we're going to have that off. We're going to get the best deal. They've, we have something they're dying to give.
Hey, John. You can talk with me. Okay. All right. But that needs to be taken into consideration. Whatever it's going to cost you, it's, there's going to be some cost, whether your pumping costs, or something, so. But having that reserve is a very valuable asset. You're exactly right in that regard, and other people are desperate for it in this region, so you do have some leverage. I'm certainly not arguing that point. There are just some unknowns there that you already pointed out.
It's also the unknown of if keeping that, if that were the case, what, if we keep the reservoir, what the operational costs are going to be to us? I'm not sure we have any idea what that's going to be.
We don't, and we also don't know how long it's going to be in the future before you actually need that water, and can get benefit of paying those costs. So, that's something that needs to be looked at as well. Which brings me to one of the points I wanted to make clear about the information you just got on Monday. We were asked to take a look at these scenarios, and we did it at a very high level, very quickly, to try and be responsive. To really look at these alternatives, we need to do probably a, at least a 10-year forecast of what operating costs would be under each scenario. Because some are going to be more expensive on the short term, and less expensive on the long term, because you're really talking about a complete change in your service delivery for water and sewer service. And that is typically what you look at, is a 10, maybe even a 15-year forecast. This was designed to say, okay, if we could go back in time to 2011, how much would we have needed to raise our rates beginning this fiscal year to cover our debt under the status quo, and to sort of make everything whole? And then, for comparison purposes, as just a snapshot, one year in time, what would have happened, or how would it have compared if we had adopted the authority's rates, if we had gotten rid of the debt, and just operated our system as a retail provider? By that, I mean just the collection and the customer service, collection system, distribution system, with the authority providing wholesale water and wastewater treatment? And then, the last one is, what if we had done all that and raised our rates? And what this shows you is that in each case, the rate increase would have had to have been larger under all the alternative scenarios than keeping the system yourself. Now, not a lot in some cases, but slightly more. And the big driver for this is, one, paying the cost of purchasing that water from Cherokee County, but mostly paying the cost for getting your wastewater treated by them, because when they get your wastewater, they're going to be looking at billing you for that wastewater based on every gallon you deliver, and we know your system has some issues, you've got a lot of infiltration going into that system, and you're going to be paying the authority's treatment rate for all that II water that goes in, which is a much bigger volume of water, and which is billing people for. So, when you convert that back to a billing cost, the number goes up.
Let me ask a question. On the, so, you show 871 million gallons of water as the demand. Is that, is that number from actual sales of water, or what is that?
That is based on actual sales of water, and it actually is a little bit incorrect. We left out a couple categories. It's about an 85,000 gallon, 85,000, thousand gallons, or 85 million gallons that's left out of that number. And what that would mean is, what it really does is ratchets up how much more water you have to purchase, so it makes the scenarios look a little bit worse.
Well, this, I mean, looking at what's there, if you've got 871 million of water produced and sold, or sold, and 800 million gallons of wastewater treated, to me, that looks like it's not an II problem, or very little, if any.
No, that is the wastewater that you bill for. That's not how much the plant treats. The other number is also how much billable flow you have, and we left out one category of customers. And so, the amount of water you actually treat at the plant is substantially higher than that 800,000. We were doing everything based on to get it back to a unit cost to the customer, so we had to look at the billable number, the amount that people see on their bill, not how much is actually treated at the plant.
But you know what that number is.
How much is treated at the plant? I don't know, probably I had.
Well, what you're saying is ball ground's not included in this number?
Ball ground? No, we left out one category of customers, which is, I don't think it was ball ground, I think it was a different group. We just missed a number in the billing data, by 85 million gallons a year.
That makes our II go up, because if you're not counting that. Bottom line is, I've got to say, Mr. Wood, we got to give them what we're asking for. And what we're asking for is get rid of the reservoir, get rid of the water treatment plant, and give us a hard number so we can look at it, or just fold your tent and say, citizens, you're going to take the hit. We've got to have some decent numbers, and I understand what you're saying, and the only thing you're working off of is what you were instructed to do.
Yes, sir.
I'm asking to... I'm asking to give us hard numbers based on the fact that we're going to get rid of this stuff. That's the scenario. We're going to get rid of it. And where do we come out once we do that?
It's an option. An option, yes, but it's not a new scenario. That's just an option.
All right.
Excuse me.
You got something else to add?
I misspoke. It is a scenario. Now, hopefully, that means the same thing as option scenario. That's what we've got to have. Then we can make decisions. We can't make decisions based on whatever.
I have a question.
Yeah, put it down.
Regarding the, I guess, the reductions that you're showing from sewer treatment plant utility partners, water supply. What is water supply reduction as opposed to water treatment? What, what is that?
Because you'd be buying all of your treated water from Cherokee County, you don't have any raw water supply costs. It's the cost of operating your right, your pumps and that type of thing.
So, what's water treatment cost?
That's the plant, that's the cost to operate the treatment plant. You've got to order to the plant. I think that's correct. And then, and then you have to treat it.
Water supply of the reservoir.
Oh, is?
Yeah. And the water repurchase from Cherokee County.
So, this shows a budget reduction for water supply, if that's the reservoir, of only $341,000? That wouldn't make sense, would it?
If that's just the operating cost of your reservoir and the water you purchase from the authority for those areas that are adjacent to their pipes and the reservoir doesn't have a lot of operating costs to that. It's your share of it somehow.
So, that's the operating, water supply is the operating cost of the reservoir. Is that right?
As well as purchased water from the authority. You purchase some water in certain areas, very limited areas.
Yes, if we take out the fact, reservoir is gone, forget it. So, there's no cost then.
And that's what we're saying. We deducted that out as part of the cost savings. It goes away in our analysis. And, and we also took out the debt service on that.
See, another thing, we don't, we don't really know what that reservoir is going to cost us in the end because we, that's not paid for yet, you know? We're not completed through.
So, you know, the real operating cost will be once it's completely finished and operational.
And a lot of that's going to depend on how dry it is too, I guess.
Mr. Mayor. Can I ask, I'm simple. I don't understand a lot of stuff. Can you give us a scenario with no reservoir, no water and treatment plant, period, distribution lines are, will be ours and the accountability or billing will be ours?
Yes.
That's it? And then we can look at these other numbers of all the theoretical stuff that could happen. That should tell us we would have the best program for our citizens by getting rid of these overheads. And I cannot understand for the world why these numbers, when we look at all this stuff and say we're getting rid of it, it doesn't prove a thing. That's what I need. I need to see that and I would like to have it as soon as possible because we've been talking about this for quite a while. And that's what I asked Mr. Wood to get us and it came back with something totally different here. So, Jack, you have something?
Yes, I was on that committee as well. And one thing that bothers me about this is that you don't just get rid of the reservoir and you don't just get rid of the line. You still have to keep the lines. And these lines are 78 years old. We don't know what that's going to cost us in the future. And I, I'd like to see this one scenario that Bob asked for as well because maybe getting rid of the reservoir and keeping the reserve is still an option. So, you know, I still almost think that we need to look at, because all these numbers come out with a high percentage rate of increase. And if we can do, keep our system and get rid of our debt, I'd like to see what that scenario actually is and see if that might be a better solution. I think we need to look at everything, obviously. I just, it concerns me about getting rid of all of it except for keeping, you know, us being held accountable for all those servicing lines and when I know how old they are and the City of Atlanta is spending billions of dollars on theirs and ours aren't in better shape than theirs are.
I, I guess, excuse me. I don't understand what you're asking, saying, but the population of Kenton was 5,000 couple of years ago and those old lines were in there. Now, you look at the size of the city and the increase and that happened through new development. There's new lines, there's new areas. So, I hear what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it is like the entire city is in dire need of a whole bunch of new lines. There is a core that's going to need.
I'm concerned that if we go and we keep this entire system and we spend 5.4 million dollars or so on the treatment plant, I'm not being convinced at this point that we understand enough about the problems with our treatment plant now to know whether or not our problems are actually physical problems, operational problems, or a combination of both. If we spend a whole lot of money on there to improve, improve the plant physically and it's operational, what have we done? If we've got operational problems, we're going to continue to have operational problems. And I don't think that we know yet where we are all right. And I think it's, it's the unknown that concerns me that makes me feel like I think, I think it might be wise for us to really, really look at, at this proposal. And I'd like to know, and I'm not sure this is what Mr. Bearsport asked, but what I would like to know is what is that number that, I, I keep hearing that the 393 on the wastewater treatment wholesale rate is just way too high. Well, I don't know if it is or not, but what number's not? What number would allow this city to break even? I mean, breaking even means having enough to put back into the system that you've got, certainly, and to maintain it properly. But what is that break even? I mean, we could go, we could take whatever that number is, if it's reasonable at all, and go back and say, look, this makes sense to us. All three of these agencies, Cobb, Cherokee and the City of Kenton, will benefit from this proposal. Everybody's, if, if, if not one of these actually wins, then the deal doesn't work anyway. But I'd like to know what that figure is. What is that that we can say, okay, is it $1.75? Is it 210? Is it 250? That will actually bring that into compliance and say, okay, this works for us.
Just one, one point. Would it be a, a, a large amount of extra effort to come up with the, say, five to eight, 10-year study that you, you say is more, more valuable?
It's certainly well beyond the scope of our original engagement and it's going to take a little time to do it. To do that, we're going to have to meet with the authority and get some understanding about how we might forecast out their rates and, and charges, what their costs are going to be. We're going to have to make a, a series of assumptions. It's going to take a little bit of work. The flip side of this is that you've already, you know, taken the matter into consideration about a temporary or at least a first rate adjustment to get through this year. I never experienced that these discussions of moving this kind of deal along is some, not something that's going to happen in a week or two.
Sure.
And so, it, anytime you get multiple political bodies trying to wrestle with an issue like this, it takes a lot of time. I think the best thing for us to do would be to, one, come back to you with a proposal that says, here's the number that you're looking for and, and sort of a snapshot. This is kind of a comparison of the alternative at one level, but then give you a proposal for a really detailed study that ultimately, hopefully, all of the parties might at least look at and say, okay, this makes sense to all of us. Because as you mentioned, if the deal works, all three parties, then, then it's not going to work. And that's what it takes. And I, off the top of my head, I think it'd be better for us to sharpen our pencil, come back to you with a proposal and say, here's what we think you need for you to consider. Here's what it would cost and here's how long it takes to do.
I think you're more likely to know exactly what we need than we are. So, I, you know, I, I would like to see that happen actually because I, I, I've been wrestling with the fact that we are trying to forecast years into the future for this city based on one year's data. And that, that just can't, can't work.
This report again was just a snapshot.
I'm saying.
And, and it would be the wrong information to make this decision. You, you do need better information. We just, this is what we can do in time to handle.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah. Do we need, is this for him or for the minister?
Well, is, is there consensus that we ask them to come back with a proposal to, to do exactly what he said and it is tell us what we need to do, what they think we need to do? And so that we have the adequate information to make that decision.
As, as long as it would include the fourth option that we discussed because we need to look at all of them.
Based on the.
And, you know, there's a lot of unknowns that, that you're going to deal with too because we, we've tried that fourth option before and, and Cobb comes back with some conditions on there that we just simply couldn't live with. Sure, they buy part of our reservoir, but they, you give up all control. They won't, right now, we have 50, 50/50 control of that reservoir. We're very fortunate to have that, but they won't, that, that's so important to them that they gain that 100% control. But when they do and we're still in the ballgame, we have no control of any future costs whatsoever. I mean, whatever they want to spend, we're going to have to pay 25% of it and we have no decision-making capacity. That's, that's the scenario and some of the unknowns that it's hard to play when you're looking at just dollars and cents, you know? But I agree with you probably, you know, whatever scenario we need to put in there ought to, ought to be included so that we can look at all everything.
Yes.
What's the timeframe?
What's your timeframe to get a proposal back, scope of work or something?
I could do that in a week or two.
Okay. Maybe in, before our next meeting, maybe a post of that? Okay. Is that, is that pretty much the consensus, Mr. Mayor? Do you think that's the thing to do? All right. Thank you very much. Out of these street trade and painting projects, I don't know, Wood, if you did anything else on that?
Not, not that you're not talking about.
The only reason that's there is I would like for us to be thinking and do so fairly quickly about, you know, adding a few more streets to, to the list and for us letting those out.
Yeah, I think we, didn't we have 13 streets on that originally? We did six of them, so maybe we can look at that a little bit.
Yeah, they got actually more than six or seven of them now, so at least 10, so right.
Well, we, we, we added some after we knocked that first six off. We added some, but, but we could, we could. What the mayor and I talked about today was if the council wants us to engage an engineering firm to help in development of that, that priority list to ensure that we get the most available money intended for whatever dollar you choose appropriate, that, that's probably the first step in the process rather than focusing on the city street right now. That's, that's secure an engineering firm that would give us that objective consultation and advice that we need and would help them instead of those previous departments.
I would leave that decision as the selection of a firm since we need to do it pretty quick. Mr. Wood?
I would, I would agree since the last bit of the lack of an engineering firm seem to be contentious issue, I think it probably would be best that we have engaged the engineering firm at the outset.
I agree. I think that's been. So, you, you want to at least begin that process to, to get someone and begin to look at how many streets we can do. Okay, thank you. I want to have committee to review the water and sewer billing procedures and pricing implementation for the next fiscal year. Now, this is for next year, okay? Next fiscal year, not, I mean, anything immediately. And, and I would like to ask that, that Jack and Leah and Mr. Bearsport be on that committee to take a look at that and to make recommendations back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't think we can do that until we know, do we have the reservoir, do we have a water replacement? Do we maintain all the knowledge?
We're a part of the committee and hopefully you will make note some, some more of that because next fiscal year's coming, whether that.
I'm an air traffic. That's for sure.
And so, if it means state, you know, holding the pattern where we are, then, you know, I'd like that committee to take a look at that. Yes.
I think our new water statements have gone out and I just want to say I'm very appreciative to whoever designed those because I think they're very nice statements.
Thank you.
Even the overcharge.
The O'Brien and Gear letter regarding the use of river water to irrigate the golf course. Back in our, yeah, sorry, please. This is impromptu, you and I haven't talked about this, but it's probably occurred to me, that we're still going to need, if you implement the rate adjustment that's recommended tonight, which should produce approximately $500,000 during the balance of this fiscal year and if we use $500,000 in water and sewer funds under that kind of balance, that's still going to leave us about a million dollars short to finish this fiscal year. If you want to charge that committee with evaluating options for the dereliction of that additional being dollars, sit down and talk about what some options are and maybe come back to council with recommendations on that? Actually, no, I don't think I would. I think I would want to, us to talk about that in our work, next work session that we can do that as a whole. The O'Brien and Gear letter regarding the use of river water to irrigate the golf course. At our Saturday work planning session, it came up that, about the golf course and the need for the water, for watering the golf course. I seem to remember at that point that, you know, side farmers and certain other farmers could, could take water directly from the river for watering crops or, or, or sod. And it was my understanding that, now, maybe you didn't have to have a per, it was 100,000 gallons or less per day. Well, Mr. Wood had asked O'Brien and Gear to send a letter, which they did, which is in your package. And if I, if I understand that correctly, basically, it looks like, we don't have anybody here from there, do we? Okay. As I understand it, looking at that, it looks like it could happen. In other words, we could do that, but it does take an application. And my feeling is, is that we should at least begin looking at the cost to do that and tie into that line going from our wastewater treatment plant up to the golf course, what, what those cost figures would be and make application for the full amount needed for the golf course. It's my understanding that there's something like 500,000 gallons per day that is, is being requested since they have actually requested and changed some greens around and restructured, resold some, some greens and so forth. So, they're looking at that. Now, if you think about it, that's an awful lot of water. That's almost 10% of our capacity to treat water in our water plant. And for a period of time now, we have been pumping regular drinking water to the golf course. And since our sewer plant is unable at this point to produce a quality of wastewater to be, to irrigate the golf course. So, I, I think this is something we may want to look at. I'm not saying it's something we're going to do. I'm not saying we want to do it, but I think we would, we would be somewhat negative, in my opinion, if we didn't at least look at that as, as an option there.
I'm from O'Brien, I'm from O'Brien here, but I'm not.
Oh, darn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I'm not the engineer that drafted this letter to Mr. Wood.
Okay.
But I think you have maybe begun the process of applying for the application for the letter of deference.
Okay. I'm not sure. Do you know?
I think it's like an online. Did you know that?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were here.
But I'm not a technical person, so.
And that's okay. We did receive that information, obviously, we did receive the forms. We did meet with our engineer, two of our engineers yesterday and discussed this process. So, to that extent, it's underway.
Okay, all right.
But we're, we're informed by our engineers that, that permit. But we're, we're informed by our engineers that that permitting process could easily consume the bulk of the summer. It's not, it's not an application that's turned around very quickly. It's not like we want to give you driver's license and they take your picture, give it to you before you leave. But it apparently takes some-
Well, anything going through EPD that is-
What do you think?
There is a problem, there is a problem.
It's going to take you a lot longer if you don't start now.
Right, exactly.
It's probably further down the road if we don't get it moving.
Right.
I, I agree that we, we should, we should do this, we should at least explore that option. But from my understanding, the meeting we had the other day is that they come back to you with requirements that you have to do, certain things you have to do to that water before you can use it. And there's a whole list, you know, we're not sure what they're going to come back. But I don't think they're going to be able to just let us put a pipe in the water and run it out.
Well, I can tell you, the sod farm down where Heritage Park is, when it was there, they had a pump there and it was coming right out there.
The, the difference is, at the sod farm, on the golf course there is. So if you spray those with water that's, has a high fecal count, then they're going to be happy. But, but if, you know, so there's, it's, requirements are different for agricultural use and for golf courses. Because that's my understanding.
Yeah, I, I think, just, just my uneducated opinion in this respect, I, I think that you'll find that that Edouard River Water is fairly, fairly clean comparatively. And I think you'll find that they'd be a very, very low, many kind of fecal color form.
I, I happened to ask that question of Brady, and he said that we discharge, the fecal count, the fecal count of the reused water is twenty-three parts per million. The fecal count of the water we dump in the Edouard is two hundred parts per million. And the Edouard itself is probably about a thousand. That, that was his opinion, I can't verify it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of, I just cannot believe that, you know. Marcelo had us around foundation, what it cost us to be able to transfer reused water in a timeframe for that line at work session two to three. Based on that scenario, it'd be better to go swimming in the sewer plant than it would go in the river. It's not bad yet.
He's taking the current rate of water and based off of their hundred thousand gallons per day and just taking a wild number and rolling that out, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks in a year. We're looking at almost a million dollars worth of money poured out on the golf course. So we've got to give EPD, you've got to give process-
They wouldn't be using it, you know, every day throughout the year, certainly in the wintertime. Not at all, I'm sure. But five hundred thousand gallons a day would be, you know, pushing three thousand dollars a day.
It's two hundred and sixty-six, two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty cents.
A day?
A day.
Twenty thousand a week, almost, fifty, eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six a week.
That's a lot of water. I hope we can use some river water in there.
Yeah, but the only, I just qualify that a little bit, because we went through the numbers the other day. And the golf courses said they're going to use somewhere between three to five hundred thousand gallons a day and not every day corresponds to three. But the calculations that were made, that if we were using, I can't remember if we're using reusable or potable water, but it's going to be something like eighteen thousand dollars a month. If we, if we just let it-
Eighteen thousand a month?
That's what, that's the number.
That's, you're saying it's seven days a week, four, four weeks?
No, what, your scenario was eighteen thousand a week?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, not a month, you hit the, yeah.
But he's talking about something, something a little different now. Okay, let's, let's move on, let's move on. We just, I just want everybody to be thinking about that, because I think we need to try to move forward with, with exploring that as a possibility. It may prove it's not, but it proves useful and it could save us a lot of money. Action on the health insurance retiree class resolution. You have an attachment there. Do we have, do we have any motion on that? Or any discussion?
I have one concern, and I voiced this before, is that this is going to add cost to our insurance program. We don't, and nobody can tell us how much. The other, the other thing that I, I noticed, I was reading the medical insurance plan from another company, and they have for retirees, coverage continuation under special circumstances. And probably discusses disabled, dependent children. You know, I don't, we don't have any provision for anything like that in our, our plan. If that were to come up, we'd have to go through another ordinance, I guess. I'm just concerned that this is adding cost to us and we don't have much.
I appreciate that. Does anyone else have any?
I'd like to make a note that we accept this resolution.
We have a motion that we accept the resolution of the City of Canton notifying health insurance carrier for the additional classes of insurance. Now, in essence, and simply stated, what's this did? This allows someone who, or any retiree, right? That needs the requirements for retirement to stay on the health insurance as long as they pay for it. Okay? And-
Until-
Until they reach the Medicare age, whatever, whatever that turns out to be.
And their spouse.
And what?
And their spouse.
And their spouse. Does everybody understand? Any, any questions? Okay. Have a motion second, all in favor, seeing if I'd say I oppose, no? All members voted for the motion accepted, Mr. Rush. Universal Alloy is fee waiver request. Do we have, do we have someone here from Universal Alloy?
Yeah.
Got a couple here. I think, you have the, a letter in your package there regarding this request. And you can, you can see that the total amount, Universal Alloy is expanding by around eighty-five thousand square feet. They will be adding some ninety jobs by two thousand and fourteen in addition to the two hundred or so that's already there. I believe, and I don't know what, I'm just asking, but I, I believe that the last expansion you had, did, were the fees waived at that point?
Yes, the expansion two thousand and four, the fees were waived, the impact fees were not.
Fees were waived, but the impact fees were not, okay. You have a presentation or anything you want to do, or just?
Well, first of all, appreciate the time there and council members. What I just passed out is some information about Universal Alloy, not knowing how many people were in that knowledge. And just would like to state before we discuss those. UAC is, is a, is a committed to the Canton area. And we came here in nineteen ninety-seven, moving the headquarters of the company to Canton. And it expanded the business in two thousand and four, which Mr. Mayor you just referenced to. And we're here again to expand our, what we call our heavy press business. This is an expansion of roughly twenty-eight million in capital. And our company truly believes if you're not growing, you're dying. And we're on the path to continue to grow throughout every four to five years. On page three, you'll see an inverted triangle. Just would like to talk about that a little bit. We're at the bottom part where we're expanding our, our heavy press business by adding a second press. Beyond this, in four to five years, we look at expanding into machining, which would mean more likely another campus within the industrial park, as well as adding a, a third press as we approach the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty timeframe. So the commitment for the company headquartered here, we have a facility in Anaheim, California, and just started up a location in Rockland. The commitment is significant to the Canton area and is the reason why we come seeking a waiving of fees and impact fees as well. Additionally, there are two other issues I'd like to bring up on the, in the pamphlet that I handed out there. There is a sewer relocation issue. And issuing of the land disturbance permit, it was found that there is a, a small sewer line in the back of our plant that passes under a cement pad, which, as we've heard here tonight, things happen in the past that we're all not involved in. But it was found that this sewer line actually goes under a portion of the building pad out, out, out in behind our facility, which has since been closed. Minor maintenance, what we call maintenance, or shit. As part of that land disturbance review, there was a revision showing us to move that line. We are asking that we do not go to that cost to relocate that line. In turn, we, we, the company, would like to issue a MOU to the city that says we would take all costs that occurred in the future if an issue did happen with that line. And lastly, we are looking at assistance in parking. And we have been successful negotiating or with the elementary school. Once school lets out, we are going to be using their lots. However, in order to keep as many employees close to our facility, we're looking at trying to go along our haly, create an area where we could essentially parallel park, which would entail removing the soil and putting the stone face down. But afterwards, we would completely remove all the stone, re-sod and landscape that side of the road. So with that, I hope you all got letters that we sent out and invitations for each and every council member to learn more about the company is there. Please, please feel free to come up to see if the company is a significant asset to the area. Anyone flies, you don't, you don't really realize that the plane starts here in Canton. Every wing streamer of a seven thirty-seven is made here. So with that, I'll leave it open for any questions and appreciate your time.
Jack?
Of course, I'm glad you're here. We, I went over there yesterday, heard the hand ring, and I'm across the street from you, so I was curious.
Yes.
So I was waiting for you to make an addition. But the question I had was on the school, have you all talked to them?
Yes, sir, in fact, there's a school board meeting tonight as well. We have talked, I've actually been up to the principal. We had it formed, signed, agreement signed, and came to agreement. Just needs to be officially approved from the school board tonight.
The other thing I wanted to ask is if Mr. Patton would speak to the, the NOU that he was talking about?
Yeah. Ken, let me ask one thing while he's on his way up. What about, what about, did you talk to the property owners along the road that you wanted to, where you want to parallel park there?
Yes, I, I have one to get to. And they were out off-site and wasn't able to get to them before this meeting. The other three, I have gotten to and there seemed to be no, no issues.
Okay, okay, okay. Ken, I'm sorry. Ken, Ken, with Jack had raised a question about an MOU there regarding the sewer easement that happens to be under a concrete slab.
It's my understanding that the engineering department requested that line be relocated at the present time. It's my understanding in the memorandum of understanding that they are proposing would be that the mayor and council allow this current addition that is underway out there to continue and move forward, leave the line where it is underneath the slab. They would incur any cost if there's any issues arise with that line and work with the city relocated at a later date with another expansion or another project. Would you understand it?
Mr. Ken?
Mr. Patton, why was it the engineer's recommendation that be removed at this time?
Let's engineer come up and address that.
Ken, don't go away, I've got a question for you.
It is good engineering practice to keep all public utilities out from under these slabs.
Go ahead.
Sure.
The question I guess would be to Mr. Dyer, and that would be relative to the forcibility, if that's the right word, of the MOU, their success or, or anybody in the future.
Well, we could, we could make it what it would be. Put some on the deed records, it's binding on the success or the interest. Question of mine, this, this is not under where the addition is going.
No.
This is, this just, we discovered it was under the thing, we'd like you to move it.
It's under the last.
Right. And it should have been moved in and it wasn't, so, or caught in and it wasn't. So it's not that this addition is going over this line. This is asking to fix a problem that already exists and would have existed if they didn't come.
Well, it's not a problem, it's not a problem.
Well, but if you had never come and asked for an addition, the situation would have remained the same. Is that right?
And this is more-
If it already existed, this addition has nothing to do with it, correct?
Was this?
I, I, is that factually, that's all it acted?
Yes, that is correct. The sewer line is under a slab that was formed with the last addition, two thousand and three, two thousand and fourteen.
So we could do an agreement that said, if, because the problem would be is if there becomes a clog or some problem underneath the slab, you got to dig up the slab. And either they agree that we can dig up their slab, or they agree to bear the cost of moving it to, to, to have. Either way, we put that in the agreement. So in my opinion, that's only addressing the current situation.
I'm just curious, Miss Barney, as to why this was allowed with the expansion that, you know, three, four? If it was, if it, I think you're saying that public access or public lines, not underground concrete, whatever. Why did this happen? I don't know if you were here then or not, but do, do you have any idea as to how they were allowed or how this was allowed to occur at that time?
I, I was not here at the time, so unfortunately, I can't speak to that attachment back to the time.
It's my understanding that it's sort of, it's not like it's a major structural feature of that building that goes over. It's sort of like a little shed or something that was enclosed. Is that, I haven't seen it, but that's the description. And is that?
Yes, sir, it's a little storage shed that was added after the last expansion was completed in regards to enclosing a portion of that slab. I believe the sewer line that was there prior to the expansion, it was probably in place with the original construction back in ninety-seven. And we're not sure why or how concrete got poured over that sewer line with the expansion, no three or no four.
Okay.
Mr. Patton, I've got really two questions. One is, my understanding is if we were to waive the impact fees, in this case sixty-five thousand dollars, would the city not have to repay that sixty-five thousand to the impact fee fund? Or do we just forget about it?
No, state law is very specific in regards to impact fee fund. If the city does waive or reduce an impact fee, the city has to reimburse the impact fee fund account an equal amount.
Okay, the, the other question is, recently, we reduced our impact fees with the new impact fee procedure. Would the, this sixty-five thousand, based on the new rates or the old rates?
That's the new rate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the UAC for being a good partner here in the city. And I appreciate the confidence that you're showing in staying here in the city. And I want to make a motion that we accept this proposal. And it's to the tune of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety cents. And I'm making that motion.
Okay, now, your, your motion is-
To waive it.
Which one now, the, which fees are you looking at?
Both of them, it's combined. It's for a total- It's for a total of $127-
That includes impact fees?
The total package is $127,413.90. That's my motion. It's waived on.
We have a motion to waive. Is there a second?
I was gonna ask if I could amend the motion.
Well-
Do we have that second first, try to amend it, right?
Is there a second? Okay. No, no second.
Well, I'd like to make an additional motion or another motion that we waive all the fees except the impact fees.
I second that.
We have a motion to waive the, all the fees with the exception of the impact fee, which is the impact fee $65,000.
Can I raise a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And ask a question about, when you represent this from UAC?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know who's gonna respond to this, but gentlemen, one of you, my question, I concur with council that we are really pleased and happy the fact that you are here and you've done a lot for our city and we truly look at you as an asset. My question is in regards to this. You're asking us to waive these fees for you. And my understanding that UAC is a global conglomerate. Your parent company is Montana Tech. Is that my understanding?
We're all by private activity and, uh-
Okay. And I've been on the internet when you all's coming out, looked at Montana Tech AG, Montana Tech Corporation AG?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And then I'll look you guys up. I have two questions. What is the estimated value of Montana Tech? And what are revenues that you as a company receive here in the city for 2009, 2010? And what is your estimated revenues for 2011? If anybody can speak to that for me, please.
Being in a privately held company, it's not something we're allowed to disclose. But I can talk rough order magnitude. Universal Allot Corporation is headquartered in the US. It's a California corporation, but we're headquartered here in Canton. So I'm the president, CEO, CFO is here. I live in Canton. CEO and CFO live down in Woodstock. The UAC business inside of Montana Tech is in the neighborhood, it's greater than $200 million in sales. The operation here in Canton is near $100 million in sales. And we're investing another $28 million in this project. And as I wrote in the letter, we've got over $100 million in asset base here. We've got an asset here that I don't think, we don't say a lot about, but it's the largest aluminum extrusion press in the country. It's the fourth largest in the world. We installed and took it apart out of the San Luis Obispo in 2004 and started operating in '05. And it does, and the wing strippers were mowing everything over. We have 103-foot long little wing strippers for the sub four sevens. We had to have rail access to this facility, which is a big undertaking back in our career on my first project. This $28 million investment will yield us an additional 40 to 45 million, maybe 50 million in sales. Pretty depends on what we're selling for. But the neat thing about what we have is this is, we're not a temporary fly-by-night manufacturing company. What we have is here in that industrial part is the benchmark facility of our oil industry factory. And we've probably been remiss, not the Cherokee County, but maybe with City of Canton, having to do with the city. We're a good neighbor. We consider ourselves a good neighbor. We've done native land, been charitable, but we, we're very busy. We run seven days a week. We've got all the employees being there to turn 100 feet there, make a run of the piece of wash. So that's about as much as I probably should tell you about the investment we're dealing. But we're very sensitive that our global competition doesn't really know yet. We haven't done a public announcement, press release on this investment. Again, we've written some big purchase orders already. And we're spending a lot of money. You come over there, you see, you take a lot of, we've been a lot thorough with it.
Ken?
Uh, yes, sir. I can appreciate all that and some of the figures that you're throwing out there. It's kind of like going on the internet also in regards to domestic. I guess my biggest concern here is the figures that you are sharing with us. And being the good neighbor that you are, being the asset to the city that you are, you know how much the city is struggling. And right now, we're looking at whether or not we're having to raise senior garbage rates and whether we're having to raise water rates. And we have a global multimillion dollar continent that's coming to us asking us to waive $127,000 in fees.
We understand.
Excuse me. I've been asked to ask you if you would please use that microphone. It's not picking up. I'm sorry.
The, we understand all of that. I think that for us, this is a gauge of your commitment though to spending 28 million. And what we've shown you in that inverted triangle is real. We need another 100 to 150,000 feet underruled, middle of this decade for forward integrating our supply chain, our customer supply chain. And then we see a third heavy press in the future, later in the decade. We can put it in Romania, we can, I'm from Texas, I'd love to move back to Texas someday. I was very motivated to consider Texas and they gave, they made a strong run at supporting that heavy press there. But there were synergies to move it here. We had already enough real estate to move it here. We settled enough ground to get almost 300,000 feet underruled. This will be the last expansion on the property we own here. There's no more room at the end. So we'll have to buy more property and make more investment in Cherokee County, probably in Canton, probably in that industrial part. We talked to the economic development commission about this already. And you know, what we're looking at through the next decade is another 200 to 300,000 feet underruled, probably another 150 to 200 jobs on top of the 240 we have now and the 60 to 90 we'll hire post this expansion. We see ourselves as a billion-dollar global business for the end of this decade. That's real. And we've got a lot of momentum in our marketplace. We're gauging the city of Canton and your support. We think we're gonna spend 28 million. We've not done a capital budget because we have an overspend. Mr. Colton, I think this time around, we can stay with that budget, but this is, this isn't easy stuff we're doing here. And so it's, it doesn't, it's weird. You think, okay, they're spending 28 million, that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but you know, why can't they, you know, just go ahead and pay all these fees and whatnot? We were surprised by some of them. We've got a contingency fund and we don't want to go deep into that contingency fund for some of these.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to say before we make a vote, that we sit here as a council and have no problem throwing away $40,000 for a golf course. That might come back and support the program. And yet we have a company that's investing in this city, cares enough about this city to bring this forward. And so they're making money, that's great, and that's the reason they can continue to expand. That's the reason they're here. And that's it.
Let me, we have, we have a motion in a second, I believe, on the table. And I think, you know, I too want to say that we appreciate Universal Allot being in our city more than, you know, we'd love to have a dozen industries like that, that large here. Because, you know, you're employing 200-plus now and another 90 is gonna be, you know, it's a pretty good league. I mean, getting busy is tough. And as Ms. Tanner said, you know, right now, we sure could use that money. We'd love to have that money. But I think you're gonna see tonight with this vote that, that there is a commitment on behalf of this city to, to your business and to other businesses that can expand and do the things that you're doing, add jobs to the city. So I think you're gonna see that. Anyway, any other comments before we vote? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Oh, there are two other issues on the parking, that's sort of up in the air, I think. And the, yes?
I'd like to know what was the final number? Is it 127 minus the 65 that we're wording out?
Yes.
So what is the total number now?
Whatever, uh-
So whatever one-
I think 127 something.
Mr. Mayor, I think the difference is probably gonna be, they paid 24,000 already.
Right.
And so the difference between 24 and 65, so there's 41,000 left.
They were asking that to be waived.
Yeah. The-
There's confusion about what was actually done. I'm not making any current thought on that. Well, it is.
I don't-
Well, I understand.
They actually paid-
They waived all fees but impact fee.
Right. Right. And they've already paid a little bit, so that'll be credited toward their impact fee work.
They had a, another option, the recon of 24,000, they paid full 64,000.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Or you gotta transfer out of water and sewer that was already paid into the impact fund.
Do I, do I have a motion regarding the sewer relocation issue? One question, of the engineer, I guess, would you, is this, I'm assuming that there's no way that line, that portion of the line, maybe because of the way it runs, could simply be transferred to them?
No, it captures upstream properties.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow it to the M.O.A., but also have the attorney draw it up.
MOU.
Agreed.
The motion is to prepare a agreement.
Did you second it?
I'll second it. But MOU.
MOU. Oh, we got MOU. Any other discussion on this? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. All those know, all members voting for the motion. Parking, I don't think there's anything for us to do on that, is there? Because we don't, we need one more item that you-
There'd be parking on our right of way.
Yeah, but, okay. I had hoped that, I had met with them earlier and I had hoped that they would have had a chance to meet with those property owners in front of whose business they would be parking. And I had asked that before they came to the council, that they talk to those people, the property owners, and get a concurrence with them. Because they're gonna go on the edge of the road, they're gonna dig out, put some gravel in, and actually end up parking a little bit in the road, right? With a little bit out or you're gonna be completely off the road. Are you gonna be behind the curb?
There would, no, there would be a wheel on the curb or in the-
On the pavement.
-shaped gully, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
And the director of the one facility she decided was not there, was not in town this week, so that's why I wasn't able to get some, I would get some tomorrow.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we does talk to them and then we let her-
Or could we do it contingently? Contingent on you bringing that back from the other property owner that you want to park in front of the business, unproblemable.
I could make a suggestion, could just move to approve, and in doing that, for every property owner that gives permission, then he wouldn't have to come back to council alone.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. There's a motion. Not a second.
Second.
Not a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. All those know. All members voting for the motion. Parking, I don't think there's anything for us to do on that, is there? Because we don't, we need one more item that you-
There'd be parking on our right of way.
Yeah, but, okay. I had hoped that, I had met with them earlier and I had hoped that they would have had a chance to meet with those property owners in front of whose business they would be parking. And I had asked that before they came to the council, that they talk to those people, the property owners, and get a concurrence with them. Because they're gonna go on the edge of the road, they're gonna dig out, put some gravel in, and actually end up parking a little bit in the road, right? With a little bit out or you're gonna be completely off the road. Are you gonna be behind the curb?
There would, no, there would be a wheel on the curb or in the-
On the pavement.
-shaped gully, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
And the director of the one facility she decided was not there, was not in town this week, so that's why I wasn't able to get some, I would get some tomorrow.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we does talk to them and then we let her-
Or could we do it contingently? Contingent on you bringing that back from the other property owner that you want to park in front of the business, unproblemable.
I could make a suggestion, could just move to approve, and in doing that, for every property owner that gives permission, then he wouldn't have to come back to council alone.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. There's a motion. Not a second.
Second.
Not a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. All those know. All members voting for the motion. Parking, I don't think there's anything for us to do on that, is there? Because we don't, we need one more item that you-
There'd be parking on our right of way.
Yeah, but, okay. I had hoped that, I had met with them earlier and I had hoped that they would have had a chance to meet with those property owners in front of whose business they would be parking. And I had asked that before they came to the council, that they talk to those people, the property owners, and get a concurrence with them. Because they're gonna go on the edge of the road, they're gonna dig out, put some gravel in, and actually end up parking a little bit in the road, right? With a little bit out or you're gonna be completely off the road. Are you gonna be behind the curb?
There would, no, there would be a wheel on the curb or in the-
On the pavement.
-shaped gully, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
And the director of the one facility she decided was not there, was not in town this week, so that's why I wasn't able to get some, I would get some tomorrow.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we does talk to them and then we let her-
Or could we do it contingently? Contingent on you bringing that back from the other property owner that you want to park in front of the business, unproblemable.
I could make a suggestion, could just move to approve, and in doing that, for every property owner that gives permission, then he wouldn't have to come back to council alone.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. There's a motion. Not a second.
Second.
Not a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. All those know. All members voting for the motion. Parking, I don't think there's anything for us to do on that, is there? Because we don't, we need one more item that you-
There'd be parking on our right of way.
Yeah, but, okay. I had hoped that, I had met with them earlier and I had hoped that they would have had a chance to meet with those property owners in front of whose business they would be parking. And I had asked that before they came to the council, that they talk to those people, the property owners, and get a concurrence with them. Because they're gonna go on the edge of the road, they're gonna dig out, put some gravel in, and actually end up parking a little bit in the road, right? With a little bit out or you're gonna be completely off the road. Are you gonna be behind the curb?
There would, no, there would be a wheel on the curb or in the-
On the pavement.
-shaped gully, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
And the director of the one facility she decided was not there, was not in town this week, so that's why I wasn't able to get some, I would get some tomorrow.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we does talk to them and then we let her-
Or could we do it contingently? Contingent on you bringing that back from the other property owner that you want to park in front of the business, unproblemable.
I could make a suggestion, could just move to approve, and in doing that, for every property owner that gives permission, then he wouldn't have to come back to council alone.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay. There's a motion. Not a second.
Second.
Not a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify and say aye. All those know. All members voting for the motion. Parking, I don't think there's anything for us to do on that, is there? Because we don't, we need one more item that you-
There'd be parking on our right of way.
Yeah, but, okay. I had hoped that, I had met with them earlier and I had hoped that they would have had a chance to meet with those property owners in front of whose business they would be parking. And I had asked that before they came to the council, that they talk to those people, the property owners, and get a concurrence with them. Because they're gonna go on the edge of the road, they're gonna dig out, put some gravel in, and actually end up parking a little bit in the road, right? With a little bit out or you're gonna be completely off the road. Are you gonna be behind the curb?
There would, no, there would be a wheel on the curb or in the-
On the pavement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. Okay. I can tell you, my feeling is, is that it would really be hard for me to support another one in October. I don't think that's gonna happen. So, this is a big increase, and I am hopeful that that, we won't need to do that in October, that we will have enough discussion along with this proposal from the Water Authority, that we can iron out some problems there and that wouldn't be necessary. But unfortunately, it appears this one is. Uh, Wood, next item.
Need action on the intergovernment agreement to conduct the city elections. Intergovernmental agreement with the county, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, so I don't know that there will be any other discussion. I do need to actually approve that agreement.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? I would ask one question. Is that, is that, show me that. Agreement as well. I didn't, I didn't have to see it, yeah.
I thought that was in the chat.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I did see it too. Okay, okay. That's all. Any, any questions about that? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion. Next item.
We discussed at the last meeting, uh, our situation at, at the land, the former landfill, not the current landfill, but where our apartment is located. And Stan Tech, uh, is the engineering firm that has been handling that, uh, closure process for us. And, uh, the direction of council at the last meeting was to continue that agreement. Uh, there had been some new costs identified in association with that. I think I told you seventy, eighty thousand dollar range at the last, uh, last meeting. But, uh, your, your, your direction was to stay the course with them, and so this would be the approval of, uh, of that continuation of services.
Do we have any discussion, any motion to continue those services?
Make a motion.
Have a motion, do we have a second? There you go. Have a motion in a second for continue those services. Uh, and we do need to continue those, I think, at this point, no doubt, considering the, uh, situation we have there. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion. Okay.
Financial statements, uh, recommended for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion.
Mr. Bryant had asked, uh, the question of what the cost would be if we discontinued the senior rate and charged everybody one flat uniform rate. We calculated that number, I included that number in your briefing letters. It was fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents a month. My charge was simply to provide that information, so that's what I thought.
Well, what is interesting, excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What is interesting is, I recall that council asked Mr. Wood to tell us the ten dollar rate. Uh, I don't see that referenced in here, other than what Mr. Bryant, uh, asked him to do. So this, this part was dropped out. We were asked to say, what's the impact? But that's, it's a side issue.
Mr. Mayor, I ask Mr. Verris for the question.
Sure.
What, the, I'm, are you asking if, what the impact would be if we raised the rate to ten dollars?
Yes.
I think it comes out to about thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
Right. Oh, okay.
Okay. That's what I need. Thank you.
All right. Seth, you, you, you don't do this, you'll need to...
Seth, you should, yeah.
No, no, you're... Are we gonna take any action on this? We haven't done that on sanitation.
I didn't, I didn't have a motion or anything.
Can I make a comment on that before we...
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say, due to the economy, and we have lots of seniors in our, in our city, and we're proud of our seniors, and it's been over two years since they've had a rate increase. And I think since we just went up on water rates, I don't think it's the appropriate time to go up on the garbage pickup. Um, there are a lot of seniors that I've spoken to, and some of them have to choose between buying groceries, buying medicine, or paying their bills. If we go up on them at this time, that's just gonna make them struggle that much more. But I would like to make a motion that we leave the garbage rate as it is.
Yep. Have a motion in a second that would leave the garbage, uh, rate for seniors at seven fifty. Any...
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Um, I'll support that. And I tell you, I'm, uh, looking at the sanitation fund, uh, ended March thirty-first, which is six months. I took and rolled the six months out to a twelve-month period. And based upon, uh, who knows, there's nothing that's gonna impact this from the second six months that have already impacted the first six months. And what would happen if we take that thirty-six thousand dollars that theoretically we're losing and subtract the surplus that we're gonna have at the end of the year, we're still gonna have a surplus with that thirty-six thousand. On top of that, we did get a excellent new contract with Waste Management that saved the city a hundred and seventy thousand. So I see no need to increase the rate on the seniors, and...
Okay. I, I think that, uh, at this point, that, that gap ought to be even a little larger since we have, that have, I, I would think, maybe, uh, lessen our losses from the roll-off side by what we're, we'll be doing during the next, uh, six months. So that figure may even look better at that point, I would think.
We'll still have the surplus of a hundred fourteen thousand or more.
Mr. Hall, just a comment. I did the same numbers that Mr. Verris did, and, and I, I agree with him. And I, I also agree with Ms. Rose that, given the state, given the, the height of the increase in the water rates, uh, there are many seniors that are gonna have a difficult time with it. And so, uh, when this subsidy began, it was only fifty cents difference. Now it's two fifty. But I think probably this is a good time for us to just swallow it and leave the senior rate alone.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion.
Seth, you've said, um, we have met with, uh, David Shirley, level surveyor, who was, uh, we, we asked to do some additional boundary clarification out there. Mr. Dyer and Ms. Tanner and, uh, other staff members, and I did, uh, Mr. Shirley has that work underway. Uh, I expect the cost to be in the five thousand dollar range. It will take several months to complete that. What he's going to be doing is delineating, uh, as many of the interior lots as we can. So, that is underway. Uh, Mr. Dyer informed me just before the meeting that Race Track has asked that, uh...
Excuse me?
Yes.
So, we're still studying the sample, is it there? I thought we were gonna give, here at this meeting, a proposal. Do we sell it or not? We're still, that was discussed at the work session.
The council, you want to sell it? The council, sir.
Well, we, we had to hold off because there was a committee working on the review of the cemetery to see what we're gonna do with it.
Can I address that? The issue became how many lots you have, and, and that's what the surveyors, because the suggestion was made to take the, there's a, there's a nineteen thirteen plat, it has twenty by twenty plots on it. If you cut those into fours, Mr. Cable had suggested that you could do that. So that, those have to be marked out so that anybody know what they were, if you're gonna sell it, they gotta know what they're buying. There's also a boundary issue with encroachments from the houses, and so I would like, you'd have to clean that up as well. And so he's doing that. So it was just more, I think the decision of the committee, or what the committee of the meeting was, we just had to get those things done.
Thank you.
Seth, okay. Mr. Dyer, you wanna speak to that here a little?
Race Track, uh, I spoke to their attorney, and they just asked that we table this. The, one of the, the zoning board of appeals was supposed to hear this issue at the beginning of this month, and there was an issue with, uh, bad date, put in some notices, and so they just asked that the annexation request be tabled till next month.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll have to come up next. Council introduced that. Action on stormwater utility credit program.
That was something we talked about at the, uh, work session, in that if we're charging for stormwater, the state mandates that we have a stormwater utility credit program. We have a stormwater utility credit manual. It has not been adopted. So what I'm, what I, I'd like to make, make a motion that we adopt the existing stormwater utility credit manual program, and that we charge Mr. Wood to administer it. And, and come, come back with the cost or whatever, but...
You have a motion in a second. Other discussion?
Yes. Under the page four, the application of stormwater credits in existing facilities must be submitted to city can on before August the first of each year, and the credit awards will be eligible for first billing cycle in September. Why don't we make it into our fiscal year? Just move them to case.
I have no problem with that. I mean, I think that probably is a good idea because at the, I think we're gonna be, uh, in the fiscal first, next fiscal year, we're gonna have a stormwater managers, what, what's the coordinate. And so, that person can work on the, on the program. So if we can, we can adopt it as of the, the next fiscal, next fiscal year, two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so, so we...
No problem. I amend the motion to be the, the next fiscal year.
Okay.
Well, the amendment to the motion, just to be clear, would be to adopt the manual except for changing the, the application deadline to coincide with the fiscal year.
Was that what you said, or was it, no?
No, what happens is, you gotta, you gotta do September, you gotta come forward and make petition to have, then it would start October first.
That's what you wanted to say.
Yes, right.
As written in August.
And September.
So we're changing the dates to September, correct? I, I understand your amendment is just to change some words in the manual, correct?
Correct.
To, to change the dates that are in the manual.
Okay.
To match up something.
That's fine.
Without understanding, you accept the amendment?
I accept the amendment, right.
You accept the amendment? Cause you seconded it.
Okay. We ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Okay. No other discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion. Action on the creation of reserve fund, Mr. Rush.
Uh, yes, this was something we also discussed at the, at the work session, and, and while we have, uh, an explanation of his opinion by the, by the gentleman this, this evening, uh, I still would like to make a motion that we take two hundred and fifty thousand from our unbudgeted funds and put it in a reserve account that can only be tapped by a vote of council. And eventually to, to, each year to build this up to, or G M A recommends that we should have it, but that, that, the, the next deposits would be based on the budget for the fiscal years. So...
No second, it means it's a fund we need.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead.
The, the, uh, under the finances, we have a sheet in there now that, uh, appreciates the general fund account breakdown and the assignment of fund balance. And as you look at it, you'll see the remaining unassigned fund balance has gone from the one point seven million down to a one point almost five million. So there's been two hundred, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand taken out already from that balance because the contingency fund's already gone. So, uh, looking at that, and we have two street projects that has eaten up four hundred and fifty thousand. We're, we're running out of, uh, this assigned fund balance. But I understand you want two fifty out of it. Should take it out immediately then.
Correct.
That's what your proposal is.
Correct.
Otherwise, no spending.
All right.
As long as everybody's aware, the gift is going.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? No. All members voted for the motion. Okay, all right. For the mayor's report, the only thing I would say, if there's anyone here who wants to make a comment, I'd be happy to let them speak during my time here. Uh, if, if you would, yeah. Mr. Rush?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Councilman, thank you very much for, uh, for letting me speak. Uh, it's frustrating when I sit there and like to say something and have to wait, and appreciate at least having this opportunity to have this thing come up and talk to Mr. Dyer afterwards. Here's my question, is this, on, on this trying to rectify and reverse the compensation, I think it's unfair to penalize the council members at eight forty, or maybe in the case of Mr. Grant, even less than that, Mr. Bryant, I'm sorry, even less than that. Is there a way that you could pass an ordinance to make it effective in January for twenty-one hundred, for the future? And have a special ordinance, one night, for the difference, for two thousand and eleven, or Christmas bonus, whatever you wanna call it, for the difference, to make it fair to everybody? And if it was paid before Christmas, guess what? Everybody is still in office. That has, that, if, if the election changes the, the current, the number of people here, then is there a way to create that fund so it can be paid?
Any, any ordinance that allows for pay over eight hundred and forty dollars this year as a pay increase, and can't, by law, can't take effect in January? I, I think the plan was to allow a payment on January first.
I understand it's unfair to the people that might be...
I, I, they're just, if, if we're, we either have to decide that it's all okay, and we've been doing it for ten years, we'll do it this year, or we got adopted ordinance and doing right. You're asking me how to do it right. To do it right, you have an order?
I do, I understand to do it right, but isn't there a way of bill of law?
Only in January. Cause state law prohibits you from voting and paying, doing anything in the current year. Just can't, can't stay long to keep it.
Okay. I don't know how many of the things I wanted to say. Is there something else? Did you have something? I may think of the other one, maybe just a second.
No, go ahead.
Real quick, has anybody done a thorough research about these ordinances, or even the minutes that said, oh, all of a sudden we're gonna go from the eight forty a year to the twenty-one hundred? Has somebody done a thorough research?
Yes.
Including minutes?
Yes.
And it's not misfiled somewhere?
If, if their minutes not filed, I suppose that's a different problem.
Well, I meant the ordinance is...
The ordinance, there's no ordinance. No. The, the ordinance will be in the ordinance book, in all my, there, there is no ordinance. The question was, was there a minutes from some meeting when the change was made, and there's none to be found.
None to be found. Interesting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, we, uh, have, uh, since Mr. Bryant is not here, and I had, uh, wanted to discuss the situation in executive session with all, all members, uh, I would, I would respectfully admit, ask that the agenda be amended to, uh, to delete that section.
Same.
Well, the only question I have, I think Mr. Dyer said we had to...
Don't even do it. I thought I didn't know what to do.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second? Uh, those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, okay. Now I need a motion to adjourn. Adjourn, second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay. Thank you.